Council meeting in Whitehall Borough for November sixth, two thousand and twenty four will come to order. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance like a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And residents are to sign in, I'm sorry, residents are to sign in to speak during citizens' requests. Speakers are allotted three minutes to present their initial comments. All meetings will be recorded auditorily and visually. And please, at this time, if you haven't done so, please silence your cell phones. Thank you. Rule call, please, Ms. Works.
Ms. Book?
Here.
Mrs. Depew?
Here.
Mrs. Eicher?
Here.
Mr. Lucetti?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Sobrowski?
Here.
Mr. Heath?
Here.
Mayor Noak?
Here.
Mr. Furman?
Here.
And Mr. Russmeyer?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, we have citizens' requests. Oh, I'm sorry, I don't know if that's a Mr. or Miss Hoffman? Just state your name in the address.
Jerry Hoffman, five three two eight Spring Valley Drive. Just wanted to thank the police chief for meeting with me, for the situation we've gone on in Spring Valley. We are extremely appreciative of the work they've been doing, the patrols on the street. It's been wonderful and a great change to see, and we really look forward to what we can see there. I also don't know if there's anyone from the fire department in the room. On October twentieth, there was a fire, five three two four, Spring Valley Drive, which is a neighboring home to ours, and we truly appreciate them. They've been a quick response and protecting our home as well that was right next door to us. And so, we just want to thank the fire department for protecting us and also helping our neighbors in their time of need. And lastly, we are so appreciative for Overlook Park. Now, when we came home and saw how beautiful that park is, it just is wonderful. As someone who advocates for the neighborhood, I just think it's going to really help us to continue to attract people there. And if there's any encouragement I can give for the stairs on Spring Valley, it would be wonderful. But I just always think you all have done such a great job, and I thank the council for investing in our neighborhood.
Wonderful, well, thank you for that report, and thank you, Chief, too. Part of our wonderful parks in our community that makes Whitehall special. And actually, I have Lori Bickel.
Yeah.
Name an adjutant.
Yeah, nineteen West Club Drive, just put your foot moves like that. Just wanted to mention or ask about understanders in last Saturday and two more Saturdays about budgets. And is West Club in on that budget, because I wasn't able to make the meetings. And I'm putting my faith in if I can't make it, that monies will be allocated for us to get that rectified. So that's the first question.
Okay, Lori, that'll be discussed at the third meeting on the sixteenth?
Okay. For the?
The third Saturday.
For that particular?
Yes.
For that event?
Yes, yeah, that'll be discussed then.
All right, because I spoke with the mayor and I forgot to ask him that question. So I'd like to thank the mayor for talking with me, and also Beth, some of the questions I had. And Stone, and Stone, you ran a great campaign, brother. Next time, we'll get him, and maybe you just have to be here for now for a reason. Okay, more than the season. So, thank you for your help, appreciated. Thanks for that information.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Okay. And move on now. Bills and payroll, Ms. Works.
Administrative Services, Mrs. Depew?
There, I'm sorry, they're in order.
Planning and zoning, Mr. Lucetti?
In order.
Public Safety, Mr. Heath?
In order.
Public Works, Mrs. Eicher?
In order.
Recreation, Mr. Sobrowski?
In order.
Storm Sewer Fund, Mrs. Eicher?
In order.
Sanitary Sewer Fund, Mrs. Eicher?
In order.
Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Mrs. Depew?
In order.
And Capital Projects Fund, Mrs. Depew?
In order.
And ask for a motion to approve bills on the bill list dated November sixth, two thousand and twenty four, from the General Fund totaling five hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred nine dollars and fifty-four cents, from the Storm Sewer Fund totaling twenty-five thousand, one hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, from the Sanitary Sewer Fund totaling nine thousand, twenty dollars and eighty cents, from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund totaling one hundred one thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and thirty-one cents, and from the Capital Projects Fund totaling one hundred thirty dollars and no cents.
So moved. Second?
Motion's been second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
I also ask for a motion to ratify, or checks and transfers to be ratified from the General Fund in the amount of five thousand, seven dollars and thirty-one cents, from the Capital Projects Fund totaling five thousand, eight hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents, and from the Payroll Fund for, in the amount of one hundred eight thousand, four hundred seven dollars and fifty-two cents, for a grand total to be ratified in the amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred seventy-one dollars and fifty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
This is with the understanding that the Public Works has been paid in accordance with their union contract. Thank you.
And next, ask for a motion to approve, to ratify payroll for a pay date of October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four, in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred six dollars and twenty-two cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And ask for a motion to approve payroll for a pay date of November first, two thousand and twenty four, in the amount of one hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And there are overtime lists attached to both of those payrolls.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
If there's no corrections, I'm going to move that we approve the minutes, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Second. Okay, motion's been second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we have Mayor Noak, welcome back.
Uh, thank you. All right. First item in my app is the monthly report for October. And EMS assists were one fifty-nine. Hearings, court hearings pre-trial was sixty-one. Accidents were sixteen. Criminal arrests, twenty-four. Traffic stops, one oh seven. Traffic details, one twenty-five. Written traffic citations, one twenty-two. And written warnings of traffic violations, ninety-three. Those are somewhat comparable to the figures from two thousand and twenty-three, October of two thousand and twenty-three. Monies collected and turned over to the borough during October, two thousand and twenty-four was three thousand eight hundred eleven dollars and two cents. Chief reports that several members of the police department will receive letters of recognition for their actions in resolving a mental health incident that occurred in the forty-one hundred block of the Key Drive on October nineteenth. Training activities, officers completed fall firearms training at the Steel Rivers Players Training Facility during the week of October fourteenth. Three officers completed an emergency vehicle operators course at the Pittsburgh Raceway Complex in Lawrence County. Chief would like to remind residents that the online payment portal available through the borough website can only be used to pay notice of parking violations issued by the Whitehall Borough Police Department. The fine, the ten-dollar fine, must be received within five days of the violation. I have an interpretation of that, Chief, but do you want to explain what that means?
First of all, pertaining to the online payment portal, you can use it to pay for other things within the borough. But when it's pertaining to the police department, the little cardboard piece of paper that you find on your windshield some mornings when you forget to call in and tell us your car's going to be on the road, that can only be paid through that portal to the borough. If you don't pay it, it turns into a state traffic citation that's issued through the magistrate's office. Once that's issued, we no longer accept the ten-dollar fee. It turns into a state violation, and you cannot pay the state violations through the borough website. And then, please be careful when you're searching for the borough online payment portal, because we just had one this week for a parking ticket where it kept getting rejected, and the individual couldn't understand why. So when we had her send us a screenshot and we dived into it, she signed on to the Lehigh County Collin Police Court and was trying to pay her fines to Whitehall Township, not Whitehall Borough and Alligator County.
And that's not the first time.
No, I was going to say that, Mayor, I know that.
So, don't get a ticket in the first place, but if you do, pay it within, you know, a certain amount of time, because once it goes to magistrate, then there's?
It's out of our hands.
And, and there's going to be administrative charges on top of that.
It's around ninety-eight dollars when it makes it to the state traffic citation.
No parking needs?
Yes.
So, next up, I got an interesting letter here we're going to read from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Dear Mayor Noak, the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Engineering District eleven dash O is currently designing and planning a construction project on Baptist Road, State Road three oh oh nine in Whitehall Borough, Alligator County. This project is tentatively scheduled for construction in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. As part of this upcoming roadway betterment project, the department is planning extensive drainage repairs to the existing deteriorated storm sewer system within Pendott Right-of-Way on Baptist Road between Hamilton and Brownsville Road. To promote good relations and partnering between the department and Whitehall Borough, the department is not asking for any financial contributions for these drainage repairs. However, please be advised that the underground storm sewer system is owned and should be maintained by the borough per Pennsylvania State Highway Law Section five one three, and the department is in no way assuming any future ownership or maintenance responsibilities by performing these repairs. If there are any questions or concerns regarding this information, please contact Joe Kernot, project manager at, there's the number, or myself. And myself is Doug Sealy, Assistant District Executive Design Division. Thought I would share that with all of you. And?
What, what was the date on that again, Mayor? Sorry, one more time?
The date of the letter was October eighteenth, but the date of the construction is the summer of two thousand and twenty-six.
You said three.
Yeah, you said three.
But six was not, sorry. Did I say three? Thank you, thank you for breaking me.
And that's going to be?
Hamilton to Brownsville.
Yeah, I got you.
So it's good. Look, the good news is they're repairing.
Yes.
Hopefully, we'll never, we could get the law changed.
Well, we might.
Or, we could get the law changed. So if you're here for the first time, if we were a township instead of a borough, they would take care of it, rather. But we're a borough, and so, we have to take care of it.
And actually, we're a homerood community, which is why?
That's true.
We don't think that it applies to us.
It's true.
Because we're not a burly, we're entitled.
Well, thank you, Mr. Solicitor, for reminding me of that. But, again, you know, it's, we should thank the state for at least, you know, fixing the problems, because I know a number of residents have, you know, been to their house. At least one person, I remember, going to this house on Baptist Road. It was, you know, it was a bad situation. So, it's getting, it's getting fixed, and that's the important message. And it is two thousand and twenty-six, not two thousand and twenty-three, but sometimes I like to throw that in to see if everybody's listening to it. And you all were.
We all looked at each other.
So, thank you, thank you. All right, I did present that citation of merit to Alexander Alex Newhouse for his Eagle Scout receiving, achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. And I'll tell you what, this was in Squirrel Hill. You know, when you come across the Homestead High Level Bridge and you go up Brownsville, and then there's that, all that development to the right, I'm telling you, it was the most spectacular place. It was all glass, like it'd be like a room this size, glass windows on every side. And looking at the speaker, you're looking at the trees on the other side of the Monongahela River. The Monongahela drops down, you know, precipitously from, you know, the edge of this. It was, it was a beautiful, beautiful place. It was a great Eagle Scout ceremony, so I thought I would share that with you. On a, you know, bright sunny fall day with the, you know, blue skies, it was, it was very nice. So, thank you, Madam President, that's all that I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? We'll move on to our solicitor's report. Mr. Furman?
Thank you, I do have a couple of items this evening. First, I would ask for a motion to retain Vowbridge Property Advisors to perform appraisal services for the borough in connection with certain legal matters.
Okay. So?
So moved.
Is this a new? Is this a new company, or?
I don't believe we've ever used? I don't believe we've ever used Vowbridge Property Appraisals for appraisal services. I know Ms. Works reached out to numerous?
Those twenty.
Oh, really, twenty?
Appraisals to, to appraisers.
That's a business to be in. No one does commercial appraisals, apparently.
So?
Okay.
Just, just to give you a comfortable, they're in Whitehall Borough.
That's always good.
Steve Barone is one of the principals of Vowbridge.
So, we have to, after, you know, multiple attempts to get what they were, the one that we're able to do the project.
Okay.
And they are good. They are fair and true.
That's important. I know, thank you, yes. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item on here, it's phrased, "To authorize a sewage credit in the amount of two thousand dollars for the property located at forty-seven twenty-four Brownsville Road." What it should really be, is to authorize the solicitor to prepare a policy to allow for a sewage credit in the amount of two thousand dollars for the property located at forty-seven twenty-four Brownsville Road and all other similarly situated properties. And this issue came arise, Mr. Andrews, who I believe is here tonight, raised an issue that he has a property where his sewer sewage line goes to the Pleasant Hills Authority. He need a water leak. Need a water leak, PA American gave him a credit for the water leak. If he was in the Alka-Sand area, Alka-Sand would give him a credit directly from Alka-Sand, which would have gone to the property owner. When he contacted the Pleasant Hills Authority, they don't do that, right? That's not something they do. So he has requested the borough to, you know, basically give him the credit. But, you know, if that is something that the borough wants to do, they have to create a policy that it would apply to anybody, right? It wouldn't to, you know, any similarly situated persons, so it's not a one-off. It would be a policy for people with that, if that's the pleasure of council.
So that would be, if we authorize that, the policy, for everyone in that Pleasant Hills Authority that wanted to have a credit sometime, would we have to do it?
Yeah, what it would be is anybody in the, that was in the Pleasant Hills Authority, you know, flowed that way, that had a water leak, received a credit from PA American, there'd be a corresponding credit that the borough would have to pay back. Now, again, that's different than in the other areas. Alka-Sand refunds the money directly, but Pleasant Hills doesn't have that policy.
So it's an attempt to treat our residents equally. You know, or at least give them the same benefit throughout Whitehall Borough. Most of the residents are covered by Alka-Sand, so they'd have it. These few residents who don't have Alka-Sand, do not have it, it's just an attempt to make it a little bit more equitable, that the affairs somewhat.
So this two thousand dollar amount, where'd that come from?
That was, that's a request from Mr. Andrews. You know, his, his, his authority bill, I believe, was more than that, but that's his corresponding amount that he's requesting based on a periodic basis, and we can?
Yeah, I can speak to that. My water bill was fifty-five hundred dollars, and when I got the sewage bill, it was six thousand. The water company gave me a two thousand dollar credit, and because of the relationship the water has with the sewage, I thought it would be a fair request.
So what you're asking, instead of this, you just said, or, ask for a policy?
Yeah, what it would be, it'd be a motion to authorize the solicitor to prepare a policy to allow for sewage credit for the property located at forty-seven twenty-four Brownsville Road and all other similarly situated properties proportionally.
So moved.
I'll, I'll second.
I'm a little confused if, if that means it would be a third, or if, if there was some sort of intelligence of the calculation of what it would have been had it been an Alka-Sand property.
Could do it either way, Ms. Eicher. You know, the one, you know, way to do it would be to equate it to the amount that PA American, you know, proportioned what PA American did. Another rational way to be do it is what would Alka-Sand have provided and make that the same amount? I, I can research both to determine what those would be. I don't know what, I don't know what Alka-Sand's exact calculation would be. But certainly, either way would be rational.
Yeah, I think it's fair to do it comparable with what is currently being done with Alka-Sand.
I think that's important. I think those are important numbers to look into, but I also think it would be important to have some type of limit listed within the policy. Mr. Andrews here is being very reasonable, right? In your, in your larger amounts, you're asking for a lower sum, you're not asking for the whole sum. Thank you for that. Um, but let's just say someone else wouldn't come later and ask for much more. I don't, I don't know, but I think it's something to consider.
It's based on the policy that the water company already has in place, correct? We're just mimicking it at the, at the council level, because Alka-Sand would do it. Where instead of Alka-Sand, we're acting as Alka-Sand and giving him the rebate to match the water company's rebate.
Well, maybe, I mean, I think that's up to how we're going to do it. I think what, what I'm, what I was, the way I, if you're going to do it, then, then, you know, PA American went through their process and determined that it was a valid leak, right? So they've already, you've already got the PA American confirming that and issuing a refund. That's the qualifier, right? And then, my, you know, you could do it where it's just the same amount as what, a percentage of what the PA American credit is. Or, as Ms. Eicher suggested, and Mr. Heath suggested as well, we'll find out what Alka-Sand would have refunded, and then do whatever Alka-Sand would have done proportionally.
So you'll do that with your research anyway?
I can research that. The other thing I would say is that I, Alka-Sand and also PA American, it's basically a one-time thing. So like, if you get the leak, you know, in January, and, you know, you seek the credit, then you believe you can get it in June, they don't, they don't say, okay, that was your point. You need to fix your own problems, but it's kind of a one-off. And I don't know if it's a three-year period or a five-year period, or, you know, there's a period of time between.
Research.
Right. So, but if that's the way to council, then, then I can work on that.
But in this particular case, so we have two proposed motions here then. One for Mr. Anderson and the other, Andrews, I'm sorry.
No.
And then, the policy?
No, 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 it's, you can't do it, you can't just say, Mr. Andrews, we're going to do it. You have to adopt the policy because it applies. You can't, but not anybody in the service area or anybody that's similarly situated. Right, right, so it's one motion.
Yeah.
It would be the, and again, we can do it one of two ways. It's to authorize the solicitor to prepare a policy to allow for sewage credit for the property located at forty-seven twenty-four Brownsville Road and all other similarly situated properties. It could be in accordance with the PA American policy or in accordance with the Alka-Sand policy. Would be the, would be, I think, and then, you know, for me to prepare that and bring it back to council, then you'd have the policy, and then you can vote on the policy.
Very good. I want to clarify that, because that's the balance on there.
Because it wouldn't be, because again, you might see the policy till we get this way or that way, but that's the process.
Okay. Mayor, did someone have a question?
No.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
So, just to clarify then, what you just said, you would create a policy, and then in subsequent meetings, is when we would vote if you agree with the policy?
At the next meeting, I'll bring back the policy. And whether, the question from, that hasn't been determined is whether it be within the Alka-Sand policy or within the PA American, or I guess I can prepare one with both, and you guys can decide, you know, whatever you want to do that night, it's in front of you.
Clarification question. Pleasant Hills Water Authority, are they handling both the water and the sewer?
No, PA American Water's the water.
Okay.
PA American Water. PHA's the Pleasant Hills Authority, which affects, is it how many properties?
Just under three.
Right, so this would only be applying to those.
Right.
Right, and the idea is, is that if you're in the rest of the borough, you can apply to Alka-Sand for a credit, but there you can't.
So that, that's what I was just trying to clarify, since they are comparable to Alka-Sand in?
What they do.
What they do. I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's where we look for the comparison? As that's what they?
That's what we're doing.
That's what we said.
Yeah. Well, he just said PA American Water, so I'm clarifying.
You know, I'm asking that question.
Right.
Would this council want me to prepare it in accordance with the, the policy of Alka-Sand or in accordance with the policy of PA American Water?
How do we know how that affects us? How do we know, unless you do both?
I can, yeah, I can prepare both in front of you.
So we have a comparison of what we're looking at, right?
Let's vote next time on both, on where, which way makes more sense. But my, my feeling in fairness is Alka-Sand, but I do feel a little torn, because I appreciate that you've been coming for a long time to see this through, and we really do owe it to everyone to make sure that this is executed more expeditiously and fairly in the future.
I guess my point of view is this, all, all the residents should be treated equally. There was a contract drafted between Whitehall Borough and Pleasant Hills. In that contract, whatever date it was, it was put together, it really didn't cover that particular exception as a credit, where the contract that Alka-Sand provides for ninety-five percent of the community does. So, as a property owner, I look at it, and, you know, we're all paying the same fee, although the fees are not the same, we are all paying the same fees. So? So the policy should be the same. The two, two thousand dollars came from the water company as a credit. And I thought the relationship your water has with this sewage, it's a direct relationship. And basically, you know, the borough, Whitehall, is Alka-Sand at this point. They're responsible for gathering the numbers from the water company to share those with the building company. So they're kind of stuck in the middle. They maintain the lines, and, you know, it's just, just looking for the same treatment.
Okay.
And if I can, you're Mr. Andrews, you're not having any conversations. You know, Alka-Sand and PHA have the same role. We don't have the same, we don't treat sewage, we don't set those things. But, that being said, so I think that, you know, the motion would be at this point, you know, and I don't think there's, there's no motions pending, right?
Yeah.
No, there is a second.
Let's, can we withdraw those? Do we have the vote?
Uh, Mr. Sobrowski made the motion, and Bill seconded.
Can you guys withdraw your motions?
I'll withdraw my motion.
I'm not, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Heath. So it's, it's to authorize the solicitor to prepare a policy to allow for sewage credit for the property located at forty-seven twenty-four Brownsville Road and all other similarly situated properties, with two versions, one related to the Alka-Sand credit and one related to the PA American credit.
Okay.
Okay, so move.
You make that motion, you say whatever you just said.
Yeah. So?
Leave it, sir.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion's made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
I think I'm opposed, because I don't know why we would put the American Water Authority involved in that. If we're going to make it equal, it should be equal to Alka-Sand, not whatever Pennsylvania American Water's saying.
I'm bringing your policy next week to vote.
With vote, so you'll get your, this is the vote office, it's just big and prepared.
It's our solicitor's time to write up two, rather than one.
I get what you're saying. Who, Mrs. Depew, for the opposing for the record?
Yes. Okay, so the motion carries, six to one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have our engineers' report. Mr. Russmeyer's.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a few items to discuss out of our November first report to council. Under item two, the operation and maintenance plans, we have two contracts that are ready for closeout. The first of- The first of which is the twenty-twenty-three CCTV inspection contract. Rota Ruter has completed the work under that contract. They've submitted a pay application numbers six and final. That application is in order. Recommended motion is to approve pay application six and final in the amount of six thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven cents for the twenty-twenty-three Whitehall Borough CCTV inspection contract to Rota Ruter Service Company.
So move. Second.
Motion's made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Next item would be the excavation, or twenty-twenty-three excavation repair contract. Similar to the CCTV, all work there has been completed. Rota Ruter submitted pay application five and final in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents. The application is in order and we recommend approval. Recommended motion is to approve pay application five and final in the amount of eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty cents for the twenty-twenty-three Whitehall Borough sanitary sewer excavation repair contract to Rota Ruter Service Company.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
On page two, under the twenty-twenty-four O M sewer projects, work under the CCTV inspection contract has started. Rota Ruter submitted their first pay application under this contract. It's in order. The recommended motion is to approve pay application one in the amount of five thousand six hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-nine cents for the twenty-twenty-four Whitehall Borough CCTV inspections contract to Rota Ruter Service Company.
So move. Second.
Motion's made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Following the theme of this evening, work is also started on the twenty-twenty-four excavation repair contract. Rota Ruter has submitted their first pay application. It is in order. The recommended motion is to approve pay application one in the amount of twenty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and no cents for the twenty-twenty-four Whitehall Borough sanitary sewer excavation repair contract to Rota Ruter Service Company.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
On page three, item four, Overlook Park. The final pay application to close out the project for Caliber Contracting has been submitted. We've received all of the final documentation. And the pay application is in order. So the recommended motion is to approve pay application eleven and final in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents for the Overlook Park Improvements Contract One, General Construction to Caliber Contracting Services Incorporated.
So move.
Second.
Motion's made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So all of the contracts under the Overlook Park have now been closed.
Yes.
Which is good, good news. And the final item this evening, as council is aware, the phase-two stairs. We left, we tabled that project at the last meeting. The bids are still valid until December eighth, twenty-twenty-four. So you have an opportunity on the November twentieth to take action, or if you wish to take action this evening. I do have a recommended motion for that.
I propose we table that to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay.
I've debated that back and forth, because I was the one that really was pushing to get those stairs done before next spring. On the other hand, I was the one that proposed waiting until we finished the budget. So I guess it's very difficult for me to make up my mind on this one. They're both so important to me. So I guess I'll, I, I agree, we should just kind of wait and see what happens.
So the motion and the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That one we can discuss it further.
Yeah, to table. Yes, sorry.
And that's all I, oh, under the item, actually, I'm missing a fourteen on page four, the Mersey Solar panels. Just to make council aware, all of the contract documents have been submitted to the contractor. They have until this Friday, November eighth, to return those documents. And then we can set up a pre-construction meeting. But that's all I have this evening. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Scott? Thank you. Next we have our manager's report. Ms. Wertz.
Thank you, Ms. Book. First up on my report, some updates on a couple of grants that we have applied for and one more I hope that you will authorize an application for. So I'll start with the bad news. The borough and the library were unsuccessful in our multi-purpose community facilities grant. That was the grant to replace the library, or the library roof and the lighting on the upper level. But some good news, there's still time to apply for an LSA grant for this funding. So I am working on an application that's due at the end of the month, but I do ask for, I do need a motion for a resolution. So I ask for a motion to read this resolution in its entirety before adoption.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution applying for a local share assessment grant. Be it resolved that Whitehall Borough, Allegheny County hereby requests a statewide local share assessment grant of one million dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the Whitehall Public Library lighting and roof replacement project. Be it for the resolve that the applicant does hereby designate Courtney M. Wertz, Borough Manager, and Linda J. Book, Council President, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between Whitehall Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. I, Courtney M. Wertz, duly qualified Secretary of the Borough, Whitehall Borough, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority of vote of the Council of the Borough of Whitehall at a regular meeting held November sixth, two thousand twenty-four. And said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the Borough of Whitehall and remains in effect as of this date. So I'd ask for a motion to adopt resolution ten forty-three.
I'll do that. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, the motion's made and second. We'll call.
Ms. Book?
Yes.
Mrs. V?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Lucetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Soborowski?
Yes.
And Mr. V?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for that. Some other good news on the grant front. I had reported this Saturday at the budget meeting that the borough was in fact successful in our two thousand and twenty-three LSA grant for the purchase of a wood chipper. We had not heard anything for over a year and we previously thought that we were unsuccessful. It turns out we just need to be a little more patient. So that grant was for fifty thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars. So once these funds are received, the machines will be ordered. And it's actually very timely, as Public Works just rented a wood chipper. And they are very costly machines, so we're looking forward to moving forward on that equipment purchase.
Do you know when we'll get that?
I don't know. I just got the applications today, so. But I'm moving on it. And then speaking of Public Works and their equipment, we had put the old Public Works truck on the municipal bid, the two thousand fourteen, or excuse me, two thousand nineteen Ford F-350. As I reported on Saturday, you know, we had a successful bidder. We were working to make that transaction happen. However, as of today, neither staff or municipal bid has not been able to get in touch with that bidder and to move it forward. So we are going to relist it since we haven't gotten a response from those bidders. And then next up on my report, just an update on our municipal pensions. The results of the two thousand twenty-two distress determination for the non-uniform pension has been completed. This is done by the AG's office. And the Whitehall Borough has a total distress score of zero, which is good. And to obtain this distress score, the funded ratio of all of our pension plans combined must be ninety percent or greater. We're sitting at ninety-one percent, so some good news on that.
Right.
And then last but not least, just a reminder that the next budget meeting is November ninth, this Saturday at nine AM here in Council chambers.
Courtney, a question on the Public Works' bid?
Mm-hmm.
They put a bid of twenty-four thousand. Why are they not accounted for that?
They, we've not, municipal bid handles the transaction, has reached out to the successful bidder and is not getting any response, and it's been a couple of days now, so unclear. I don't know if it was a scam. I, I, I don't know if they just decided against it, didn't process it. But since they're not taking any action, we're gonna close this and relist it and start the process again. Because that bid was actually about six thousand dollars more than what we had anticipated. Were there any other lower bids received, or was that the only bid? No, there were, it appears that there were at least three bidders, because we can see to an extent the, the back and forth. The, the first and the second bidder have not been responsive, so. And there was a, a back and forth bid war, I guess you would say, bid escalation. So I have no explanation. It's, it's the oddest thing.
Super suspicious.
Because we had great success on municipal bid with the old map drop, and that was executed flawlessly, but at this point, municipal bid can't get in touch with them. We don't have their contact, so we're just gonna start over and hope for the best.
The grant that you didn't give, is that the one that we applied with the county?
No, this was the ARPA funds through the Broadband Authority. That we had, Alyssa, myself, and Paula Kelly had worked and had a number of community support letters for, it was over a million dollars.
Have you heard from the county?
On the Clean Air Fund? No, but I'm checking every day. So if you hear something, let me know. And that's all that I have.
Okay, thanks.
Could I ask a question?
Okay, just stand up and state your name and address.
Jimmy Clover, ten forty-three Duncan money. Are any of the muddies being looked for for the tennis courts?
I'm always keeping an eye out for you, but I don't have a current application in, in the works. But if something comes up, I'll, like, you know. I didn't forget about you.
Always good to find that one. All right, thank you. And next our assistant manager, Ms. Regala.
Yes, thank you. First up is being regarded to the volunteer initiative program. The Whitehall Borough Neighborhood Volunteer Network is ready for launch, so that program will be live on the borough website tomorrow, where volunteers and recipients can sign up. Information and the necessary documents will be under the "How Do I?" tab on the website. But if residents have any issues or need assistance, please stop into the borough building and we will have paper applications and waivers. And we've forgotten to start, just in time for fall and winter.
Right.
And then second up, the results are in for the pumpkin decorating contest. In third place was the finance director, who was the marble apple. In second place was Hannah, the recreation director. She was the haunted mansion. And in first place was me. I know, like, I have to announce my win myself. And then next up is gonna be our gingerbread house decorated contest.
What was your, which one was your?
Which is brew.
Is that what it was?
Which is culture.
Were the feet were sticking out?
Yep.
You had my vote.
That is all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Alyssa? Okay, we have our committee reports. Putting on zoning, Mr. Lucetti.
Yes, two quick updates. The planning commission will meet next Wednesday, November thirteenth, to continue work on prospective zoning ordinance amendments regarding uses in commercial zoning districts. And the zoning hearing board will meet on Tuesday, November nineteenth, to hold a hearing on a variance request for four-five-four-one Country Club Drive from the height requirements in Article twenty-five to permit a cupola to be attached to the accessory use building. That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Lucetti? I thank you. Excuse me. Library, Ms. Thomas.
We will be meeting next week, so nothing to report for the library, but I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Furman and Ms. Regala and Mrs. Wertz on the support here to set up our neighborhood volunteer network. I'm very excited about it. Can't wait to sign up. So thank you all for getting an idea out of my head and onto paper and onto a website and out into our community, so very excited. Thank you all.
Well, thank you. That was great. Next we have recreation, Mr. Soborowski.
Thank you. The Best Overall House for our first annual Halloween house decorating contest was featured on Pittsburgh Today Live, if anybody wanted to see that. Their yard, Whitehall, was mentioned, so we will have this annually now. They mentioned it, that they're gonna get bigger and better. And I did pass it right after, on November first, and it was down and gone. And like, I could not believe it. So if you would like to see their house and you didn't get to see it out, you can go on Pittsburgh Today Live and look up Halloween decorating contest Whitehall. From there, Breakfast with Santa tickets went on sale November first. As years passed, tickets sold out in only a few hours. We are excited to have two hundred and twenty people join us for Breakfast with Santa. It will take place on December fourteenth at celebratory events and catering. The Recreation Department is continuing to partner with Ms. Denise in the library with Acheva's Early Intervention, Birds of a Feather Playgroup. It's a preschool readiness playgroup. It's an inclusive play and learning environment to help children prepare for the transition into preschool and beyond. Our next playgroup is tomorrow from ten-thirty to eleven forty-five in the community room. As many of you know, the Recreation Department has been working with Denise in the library with the Whitehall Winter Sustainability Market, which there's some flyers over there. Friday is our last day for donation collections. We are getting in abundance, which is great. We would love to have more, though. So we have drop-off locations, the library during business hours, administration during mixed hours, and the police station. And the list of acceptable donations are on that paper over there. The Zero Waste and Zero Cost Winter Market will allow guests to shop for their family members at no cost. This is a great event for people who are looking to give a new life and new love to community treasures. The market will actually take place on November third in the community room from ten to twelve.
All right, thanks, Hannah.
Hannah, I did let you know that the Best Overall House, they did put their sign up and reposition their skeletons.
Oh, he was like holding it.
Yes, they were, they had skeletons, and they had won, so.
All right, nothing else for recreation?
I have some things in the car, so I have to have the chief remind me. The police station. Oh, I did. That's, that's.
Okay, next is Public Works. Ms. Iker.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Wertz, for clarifying the, the status on our, our grants and progress. It was something that we definitely all need to, to take a look at and as we anticipate this budget season. That I do want to report that I did go through the, the Public Works budget as part of, of the last discussion and found it to, to all be in, in order. I'm anticipating as per our last Saturday discussions that it, there would be, the, the wood chipper would go forth into possibly the twenty-twenty-five if, if we needed to have some sort of pass-through funds. Did I get that correct, Ms. Wertz?
We could, there is a, a line item for equipment that exists that could be utilized for the, because we've been successful on this grant before.
Okay.
So depending on the time.
Yes, but it would have to be under the capital page, not the, the general public works equipment page, because that's for, for lighter grades of, of equipment, as I understood from our discussion last Saturday, as well as the, the two diesel trucks that we have on, on order. And I do seem to remember that there was a, a grant applied for, for a bucket truck for hopeful anticipation for twenty-twenty-five. Did we ever have any news on that?
No, we just submitted that application in September, so it'll probably, based on this timeline, I anticipate it being another year before we hear on these most recent applications.
Okay, um, would it be prudent to, to put that in, in the capital budget for, for the pass-through? Or would that, it would be prudent to, to hold off on that? I'm, I'm not sure.
Counsel's discretion, either option would work. The line item exists. It's not as though the borough is expending any of their own funds. It could be the grant monies is received and then sent back out.
Okay, as, as long as it's contingent, then I, I think that it's appropriate to put it in there. Great. And I, I'm respectfully requesting a, a copy of said letter, Mr. Mayor, regarding the, the work on Baptist from Hamilton to Brownsville to perhaps be even considered for entering into the minutes. Is, is that possible?
I can certainly scan it to all of council. This is my copy card.
Yeah, well, I mean, I want a copy, so if you're gonna put it.
I'll scan it to everyone.
Okay, yeah, that, that would be fabulous. Thank you so much. And I did have a citizen who proposed an idea regarding the stairs at Prospect Park. Now, I know what you're thinking. This is a parks project rather than a public works project. But the where, where it overlaps here is it would have to involve moving the yard waste dump to the other dump of Prospect Park to allow a pass-through for pedestrian traffic from the roadway. to allow a pass-through for pedestrian traffic from the roadway down the hill where there's already somewhat of a gravel pathway. It looks like there once existed a pathway to continue to walk from the road all the way to the rear of the current place for the yard waste dump. However, it has since been overgrown with some weeds, and it has also been chained off. So I, I would like it if either committee, I'm not sure which would be more appropriate, to perhaps take the, this into consideration as a possible workaround in, in lieu of redoing those stairs, because what this pathway is, is it's approximately fifty feet away from the stairs would be a more flat walkway to the rear of where the yard waste dump exists today.
Well, since it is Prospect Park, I guess that would be something that our committee, your committee can be.
I know the path you're talking about. Originally where those dumpsters are was a parking lot for Prospect Park. And there was a path from a parking lot down there. Since then, the use has changed for that area, so I'll, I'll. Part of my report is Highland Park, and I'll go over and take a good look at it on Friday. I'll have good news about Highland Park.
Okay. Oh, okay, so, um, would you like to, to go over there with me to Prospect after the wire?
After we visit Highland Park?
Yeah. Outstanding, let's do it. Thank you.
Is that, is that all you have?
Yes, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to Public Safety, Mr. V.
Thank you, Madam President. Two, two items here. The Chief Report says Borough Solicitor, that's Mr. Irving down there, has prepared an agreement for the retirement and care of the police canine for council to review. Is there anything, Irving, you wanna?
No, it's, you know, I understand that, you know, that the canine, canine dog is of the age and health that is gonna retire, and this agreement allows for.
That's efficient, thank you.
Last thing to them.
This agreement allows for the Borough to sever their responsibilities and provide a safe next step for, for the dog with this handler.
And the handler did sign off on it.
Yeah, right, okay. So therefore, I'm gonna, what do I need to do? Make a motion to authorize a Borough prop, the proper Borough official to sign the agreement for the retirement and care of police canine, fend the dog.
That was a motion, guys.
Motion's made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, can we?
Wake up this.
I have a question, is there any way that we can give the retirement gifts to the canine?
Ask her?
All right.
I'll bake him a birthday cake.
That would be great.
A retirement cake. Make him a retirement.
What do you have in mind?
I, I'm not really sure if there is a registry for such a thing. I, I think there would be.
He likes dog treats, he likes bones.
Okay.
Crownies, okay.
All right.
Bones, not brownies.
All right, fantastic.
I got one more.
He's tired, dial, so he can have it every once.
Also, the Chief reports our radio service vendor has completed upgrade to the police radio repeater located in Brentwood. This location was moved from the outdated analog circuit to a new modern digit circuit. End result, six thousand dollars saving for the Borough. Wow, gee, that's awesome.
All right.
An old copper line costs four hundred dollars a month, the new fiber line costs a hundred and ninety-eight.
Good job. There's no motion, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. V? All right, we'll move on to Administrative Services, Mrs. Depew.
I have nothing to report.
I have nothing.
Okay, then.
But on the parks, I do. Highland Park is opening their new playground on Friday at 10:00 a.m. This is really in connection, if you haven't been here to all the meetings, with Talitzin School. They actually funded the new equipment to put in the park, and we've worked together, I think very well, to put in the new equipment. Our Public Works helped them install it, they paid for things. Courtney was down with them, walking around several days to, to figure out where exactly it should be put. It will not interfere with the soccer or the baseball fields down there. So I'm excited, at 10:00 a.m., or November 8th, I will be there, Beth Lynn will be there. And if any of you would like to come and see it, I think it's gonna be exciting.
I think I need to get it.
Playground equipment for special needs students that attend Talitzin School. But it will be available to anybody that wants to go see it. It's moving on with something at Highland Park that we haven't had for a long time, is a new idea down there.
And I must say, they've been a wonderful partner when they first approached us. This place at Public Works, myself, Hannah, who has a background in special education, it really is a truly inclusive set that will meet their needs but also serve the general public, so we're really excited about it.
It's a win-win. Great, Kathy. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the delegate reports, and I'll report on, I attended ALOM, Allegheny League of Municipalities, their fall conference a couple weeks ago. And I'm for, I'm waiting for all the handouts, because they don't give you handouts at conferences anymore, because they wanna say trees on paper, which is all good, but I, I requested the handouts, because I like to give it to council. It's really a lot of good, interesting stuff. It's on cyber threats and topics that municipal planning and zoning, fight, sorry, plight of the homeless. Corey O'Connor was gonna be there to speak, but he had it canceled, but there was some material on that, labor unemployment and ethics. And there was one thing that was especially interesting to me about the website compliant with new ADA rules. I was like, what, how can you be ADA compliant on a, on a website? I'd never heard of this. And.
It's real.
And so I got the information in what, sometime in early 2026, our municipalities have to be compliant to be ADA compliant. So I mentioned it to Courtney and Alyssa, now, oh yeah, we were on, yeah, we were gonna, she's like, okay, do you wanna say a little bit more about how that works? You know, with the ADA compliant, like, what that means for like a person that's hard of hearing, or?
So we're not fully compliant with the list that you sent us, but we are working through it and, you know, it is, we have a lot of the, the low hanging fruit, I guess you would say, there is certainly room for improvement. That being said, it's a complaint-driven policy, and we have not received complaints on our website redesign, but certainly it's something we would address if that came up. We actually did have that on a previous iteration of our website, I don't know if any of you remember, the light/dark mode that came about, because someone reached out to us, said they were having trouble, you know, accessing the information or seeing it, I guess. And we were able to respond to that, so it's something we kept in mind with this current website redesign. And there's a lot of great information that you did send us, except we're still working through it. But we're doing all right so far, we're checking off the boxes.
That's not my world, that's not my, you know, I use a computer at the office, but that's about it, I don't get involved in that. And I just thought it was fascinating, that's what's great about going to these conferences. And so anyway, by the next meeting, I'll have those handouts for everybody. And so in the PSAB, Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs, I don't have any update, I will, I'm gonna have a, a meeting coming up in next month, so I'll refill on something on that. And next is the Brentwood Baldwin Whitehall Chamber of Commerce, Mr. V.
Then Courtney attends these meetings.
Yes, and we do have a luncheon tomorrow, so I'll have more to report at the next meeting. But I did just wanna quickly thank Mr. Lucetti, Chief Gaboric, and Paula Kelly for attending our coffee talk that we hosted last month here in this room. It was really well received by the, the attendees.
Oh, good, okay, thank you. Mertz, Board of Directors, Mr. Lucetti.
Yes, Whitehall received 205 calls for service in the month of September, which was a significant reduction from the previous month, which was 251. They're not sure why that happened, but it happened across all municipalities in the area, so that was good news. Last month, Mertz officially swore in Acting Chief David Turkle as the official Chief of Operations. Chief Turkle has been with Mertz since 1996, and he's done pretty much everything there, starting out as an EMT, then moving up to paramedic, and then lieutenant, and now chief. So he's earned the job, and we look forward to greater things for Mertz with him officially as the chief. Also, the Mertz Executive Director presented the planned budget for next year. The final vote on the budget will take place in their November meeting, but the planned amount has been provided to the, to Ms. Wertz for discussion at the next budget meeting this Saturday. And the Executive Director, Douglas DeForest, has planned to be in attendance for that.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Lucetti? All right, then we'll move on to Sheikog, Mr. V.
Thank you, Madam President. We had our meeting in October at Neville Wood, most of us attended that, it was really, it's really good to break bread with other communities and good ideas, so it was a very, very productive evening. We had two winners and prizes too.
Not only that, but.
What?
You and I had a chance to talk, because Beth Lynn had reminded us about the van truck sitting down in the tennis park.
Yeah, we talked to Mr. Gorski.
And one of the reasons you go to these meetings is to talk to people. And Bill and I had a chance to talk with the director or the manager of Sheikog. I know Courtney's been in touch with him, but we had another chance to talk with him, and somehow the title couldn't be titled to Sheikog, it had to be titled to another group, which has gone out of existence. But Lou Gorski is an attorney by trade, by education, I guess I should say. And he realizes what had to be done, and I think he said it would be advertised, and he would be able to sell it through some particular website that he named.
Right, right.
So that will probably get, hopefully get moved out, or at least.
Before the poll opens, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's a long, thank you. Thank you.
And our next meeting is November 21st, it's at Duffel Park. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Bill. And we're into new business. Anybody have any new business? If not, I'll talk about Veterans Day, Monday, always Monday, well, it's always November 11th, which is this coming Monday. And Mayor Noaw's always part of our wonderful program. And this year, we have the Historical Society that's going to be participating, they have a program. And of course, our Whitehall Community Lions Club, they're always donate the refreshments. 11:00 a.m., sure, on 11th day, 11th month, 11:00 a.m. And then at 10:30 a.m., we have all the refreshments, everyone's welcome to come. And it should be nice, I'll hope to see everybody there. And I also wanted to mention, Mayor Noaw, a couple weeks ago, and I were talking about trying to facilitate somehow donations to the hurricane victims. And so it was all simple to talk to Mary Ann Bellis, the President of our Whitehall Community Lions Club. So she provided information that we could put on the website and give to Alyssa for folks to send donations if you can. But it's a one, it's an address in Harrisburg, the Lions of Pennsylvania Foundation. It all goes to one place, it takes care of what everyone needs, and especially in North Carolina, but all those folks from the hurricanes. And if you can notate, and this will be on the website too, that when you do send a donation, to notate that the Whitehall Community Lions Club was instrumental in them getting the donation, because that's good for the club. At the end of the year, they have a way to keep track of that and everything they donate. So I thought I'd put that on there, just so everyone knows they can look at it, look for it. That's all I have, anybody else have any?
Well, Ed, yeah, I'm a history buff, as some of you probably know, but 11/11/11, it was really interesting when that Armistice was signed. There were a number of troops that did not get that message, and they were killed. A lot happened, but there was, the unit never got the message that the war was coming to an end.
It is been killed.
And, boy, talk about being a loser in that situation. So unfortunate for those people. But it used to be called Armistice Day, if you are.
Correct, yes. Yeah, thank you.
Anyway, just a little history lesson. Everybody probably knew, Eric didn't, but I know who he is.
There was also a bomber run that was going on at the same time. Are you trying to upstate me?
Lori, one last.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I just wanna thank everybody in the audience and up here at the council. This is the first meeting, you know, I've been coming for 24 years, this is number 10 in the last three or four months. But I want to thank everybody, because this is the first time I'm gonna leave here and feel like everybody worked together, whether you're in the audience or up here, and I can leave and still like, you really work for us together, because the times on that chair, and I'm thinking, two people running here helping us, now it's the whole group. So I wanna thank you for that.
Well, I do that, that's our, that's our intent, Lori, but thank you for the words. That's our intent, we appreciate that. So no other new business? We, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. The motion is made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Return, 805.